Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the WNESU School Board Meeting.
All right, well, I'd like to welcome everyone. It is 6:00 and this is a meeting with the Wennesmore Junior Supervisory Union, Board of Directors, leading at Bellows Falls Junior High School at 6:00 on Wednesday, September 20th. So the meeting is called in order at 6:00. And again, in the spirit of serving the public, let's go around the table and anyone who's a board member also online, we will have an introduction. So actually, I'll start online since I see an SU board member there. So Team, would you introduce yourself, please?
Hey, Team Bealcy Westminster School Board, representing the Westminster School Board on the SU Board.
Thank you very much. That's great. And Karen, you're just in time.
Karen Blanchard Westminster School Board.
This is Debbie Rockingham School Board and Treasurer of the WNESU and Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Kathy Seattle Goodwin, draft in Athens, and also on the SU Board.
Duvizina, Helping our Superintendent with Finances. Dave Clark, Member of the Bellows Falls Junior High School Board, representing Westminster and a recent appointee to this board. Oh, Andy, how's Superintendent of School?
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Board of Westminster. There's several members, Clark of the Board, and representing Rockingham.
Jason Terry, representing Rockingham for the Bellows Falls Junior High School Board.
June Streeter, representing Westminster on the Bellows Falls Junior High School Board.
Jim McCollum, representing Rockingham.
Thank you, thank you. And one more. Lynn, you can introduce yourself. Welcome.
I'm Lynn Morgan from Athens Grafton School.
Standing. And Hardy.
Hardy Merrill from Athens Grafton.
All right, perfect. Well, glad to see all of the board members and thanks to community members for being here as well and always to Fact TV for helping us document with the meetings. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Which is 6C. We did some research. They had been approved back in August. We did a quick, quick find of at first and it was just an immediate one for that more caution to have one this agenda. We don't need that at all.
Thank you. So we'll remove those. Thanks very much. Any other adjustments? With that, let me open it up to any communications and public comment if there are any.
Well, I have communication public comment, which I will distribute. What I have here is a copy of a Freedom of Information Act request, which I filed on the superintendent's pool, too. We want to pass that back toward the head of the table. The request is on one page and what I would refer to as a background is on the second page. Oh, yes, there is one item I will add to that. When I went looking for a mailing address for the supervisor reunion, the only one that I could find is the one that is listed on page one, which fortunately I took to the Westminster Post Office in order to send it return received mail. And I said, well, we'll just run it down to Westminster Station where it's actually box 92. I think will be useful and helpful to the public if the mailing address for the supervisor reunion was actually posted on the supervisor reunion website. Thank you, Chanel.
Okay, thank you. So the next item of business is to renew and approve minutes from August 2nd to August 16th and September 6th. As a point of administrative clarification, I discovered yesterday in reading the many SU bylaws that we've been working on revising, that there's a section in it that specifies how members of the SU Board will be identified. And the language, which we're not proposing to change at all and which we'll be talking about later this evening, among all the other bylaws that are proposed for consideration. But that one specific part of the bylaws says that members of the SU Board will be elected by their respective school districts and not a president. And it's been customary, I think, in our supervisor union to have representatives to this board be appointed. In the case of the high school, as we looked at all the past minutes, the high school nominated at that time, June Streeter, Jason Terry, and Molly Vannick at the reorganization meeting, which is what the bylaws called for. And they actually did put in their minutes a motion to approve those appointees. Andy and I spent an hour with Sean Tui, one of our attorneys today, to go through all of the bylaws and were able to discuss that particular item. He said that all of the other board members that have been appointed and their names are in the minutes and there has been no objection to those people having served or being the people to be serving on this board. That there's no problem with those appointees' past action. If we wanted to take additional action, each board could ratify those appointments. But he felt that we were on solid ground proceeding with all of you, all of us who were around the table at this time. He did say, however, that the proper course for a new person to sit on the board, as in Mr. Clark's situation tonight, is for the high school board to actually elect Mr. Clark or whomever the board chooses to come sit at the next meeting and be a vote member. So with all of that and with Council's clear advice to us today that a new person having not been approved by their respective boards would not vote tonight, it was my judgment as Chair that we invite David to sit at the table and to participate in the discussion, but not to vote. And that's the reason that I'm bringing that up at this point when we're about to go on minutes. That's okay. So welcome. Thank you for being here. That's how we proceed from there. So with that, let me ask a question. Okay, Cheryl, the only problem with that is that if the boards are, in my opinion, and you can respond, of course, is that if the boards are working by consensus, for example, at Rockingham, when Chris and James were appointed, I asked the question of whether there was anyone else that was interested in these sort of people that weren't interested. So by consensus, ours will have been appointed that way at that time. So I think we were on solid ground. We looked at, we looked at all the minutes. A more accurate way to do it would be to use the language of election, or at least to put a motion in because to have the board members vote to approve the needs is an action that can be construed as an election like that. It's a vote. So it's a, it's a democratic action. You can talk about that with your board. But I think it was raised in conversation, maybe none of us would have standing right now. That was not his opinion at all.
Was this state law? Would it be this reference to being elected to a supervisor reunion board? Where?
That was in terms of the bylaws that we're currently operating by. And I'm saying our practice has been less formal than that to appoint people, but the boards each typically vote to approve their representatives.
The WNESU bylaws would have no bearing on my being selected from the Rockingham Board to serve on this board.
They, the law, this is actually, I think we could hold this maybe for the bylaws discussion because it's on the agenda and we'll come back to it. But I'd like, and so please ask it again.
Yeah, okay.
But right now, the matter on the table is to approve minutes from the three previous meetings and I'd like to inter, any motions you'd like to take them separately or all of them at once? A motion?
I made a motion that we approve the bylaws.
We're not doing bylaws. Right, this is just minutes.
Minutes, three minutes.
From August 2nd, August 16th, and September 6th. All right, Lynn has made a motion. Motion's on the table. Any discussion? And you can identify which of the minutes you're referencing. I suspect in the comments that I think people are not prepared and ready to do this.
Would you please raise your voice just a little bit? If you'd raise your voice, it's just that these, because of these things around here.
Karen, I'm sorry. I see. It looks like people are needing time to read them.
Oh, I'm.
I don't know. What's your pleasure? I mean, they've been out for a while.
Yeah, I've been reading.
Okay. So there's a motion on the, on the floor. I don't know that there are any corrections to the minutes. I think there are opinions in the minutes, but I don't know that there are any corrections to them. All right. All of those in favor? I don't think we, I think I'll just ask Team to vote and we can do it around the room. We can see. Team, your vote, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hardy's on there, too.
Hardy, very much. Thank you, Hardy. And thank you for coming here today. All right, let's go around the table. Karen? Yes. Chris?
Yes.
I can vote for all but September 6th as I was not attending that meeting.
All right. Right. She's, Priscilla's pointing out by Robert's rules, you can vote when it's your, you may abstain on that. Oh, then, yes. Okay. And you're not voting tonight? Okay. Jason?
Yes.
Okay.
I, can I abstain from the 6th, September 6th because I wasn't at the meeting, but approve the other two?
Thank you. And Jason? From all three? All right, so. Minutes are approved from each of those three meetings. We'll start now with the reports. And the superintendent.
Sure, we have picked school off and it's been an interesting start to the school year. As you all know, we started finding out about PCBs being elevated examples here at the high school. And I just want to commend not only the high school board, but also Principal Orion and her staff on how they've addressed and tried to immediately respond to everything that's been going on. It's been a daily battle just trying to address it and deal with it. In talking with other superintendents and I've been on some panels recently, I think we've learned a lot from the mistakes other people have made over the past year or so. And I think we're benefiting some of that with the state, with the response time we're getting on turnarounds. There are some districts where it's over a year and they don't even have a corrective action plan. And so, you know, we're able to kind of glean from that for things that, you know, the pitfall not to do, but we've been working really hard. More units showed up in the last week here. So now we have a full deployment of carbon filters as recommended. Today, they came in to do the second air sampling after the units have been running now for eight days total. And so that was set up today. The state has told us that they will, they've already authorized an expedited return on these, these tests. So we're expecting results within seven days. And so our hope is that, because there are other, at other schools that have deployed similar numbers of units, it's been able to reduce down the PCB particles in the air down to lower than the school action level. So we're hopeful that that will take place. So that's really been a big, you know, push. As you come in here, obviously, you see the tents. That was a temporary, you know, mitigation factor to try and provide opportunities to have less student and staff time in the building so that they can transition them in and out. And, and so we've been working really hard to kind of do that. We're now pivoting to already looking at the time when the tents will go away. They won't be here, you know, past certain seasonal times. So we're already starting to talk about, we need to get modular units because there's a thought of two-month lead time and we need to get them, if we need to go modular in some regards. So we want to make sure we have plenty of time prepared for that. And so, but in, in, in working with the state, after they've done this air sampling, their hope is to pivot to look at source sampling of where the actual PCBs might be within the building so then we can begin working on that corrective action plan. So.
We know when that's going to take flight, but still.
When the source sampling will happen, I think, I think they're looking at, and this is kind of my consolidated piece of it, the air sampling, if it drops below the school action level, so below 100 nanograms, then they can begin to factor that there might not be sources of PCBs in the D wing area. And so that's where the majority of our units are deployed. So that would then tell them that the sources are maybe somewhere else, so they would focus on those sources. There, obviously, the gym and the auditorium are pretty high levels. There's been some indication that it may be in the paint that is used in the roof decking and the trusses type of thing. So that's an area that they've indicated numerous times to us that they want to go in and look at that sourcing. However, if these units do not work, that's going to indicate to them that there are sources that are producing in the D wing and that might change their projection of where to look. So we are, we're hoping, again, like, after this meeting with, or after the test results come back, we have a meeting scheduled already and then we'll start moving in that direction. I think another big thing that I really just want to put out, put out there at WCAX, and I see that Harley's with us today, our nutrition director. Harley, under his leadership, has brought us, gotten us into, involved in an organic milk program, which allows us a, basically, we call it cow to student initiative. And so there's a, there are local dairy farmers who were able to get milk fresh from that, bring it directly to the students. It's a bulk milk. So we all went to school and we had the little paper cartons that you could never open and deal with those. Now students can go up with a glass, they can get as much milk as they want to have. Here at the high school, I noticed the machine has chocolate milk and a regular milk variety. But we're getting a lot of positive results with kindergarteners, you know, getting pictures as opposed to, we don't want that to be steady, but it's a, it's a huge program. We're really proud to be involved in it. But we're looking at October 19th as an opportunity where we might be able to take some of our students down to Miller Farms, who is one of the producers, for kind of a field trip, but also just kind of a kickoff kind of thing. And so Harley's been working to organize that and so it should be a really great idea. My understanding is the governor's been invited to that. But we're hoping to be, you know, that pilot program for the rest of the state. So, I mean, Harley continues to amaze myself, but I think all of our administrators and, you know, feel the same with what the work he does for us. And then just, you know, in, in my report, I provided with you a lot of information. So I don't know if there's any specific things people have questions on. I'm happy to try and answer those or at least there's some notes and come back.
Let me open it. Any questions? Yes, Kathy?
The milk program, I know it's been successful out in Grafton. Is this program less expensive than what you was going before or more? What's the cost?
Could I mean to Harley? I don't know why. Harley, did you hear that question?
Hey, can you hear me?
You can.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm in the middle of dinner and stuff, but I'll try to answer the question. Obviously, organic milk is more expensive than our conventional milk that we had used in the past. But the, the aim of this pilot is to try to offset those costs by reducing waste. So reducing the number of milks that expire and reducing the number of milks that are taken just to take them. So we're aiming to, through this pilot, offset the cost, the increased cost of buying organic local milk through these measures. So far, so good. You know, the total exposure for the year is pretty minimal compared to all of the other variable costs that, you know, come into the food program throughout the year. You know, the price of potatoes could go up at any time, et cetera. So the, you know, the total liability financially is pretty small and within a realm of risk that we're comfortable with. But we're really hoping that we can model the waste reduction as a way of offsetting this so that other schools could come on board.
Great, thank you, Harley, very much. Any other comments or questions? Chip, let's go.
I just want to say that there's other people that are doing this pilot program. WCAX had an excerpt on it. And I cannot believe the time, I mean, the timing from, from getting the milk to getting it delivered, I mean, it was just incredible. I mean, you talk about cutting out sitting somewhere. This does it. So you go, I guess I'm just saying, it is fresh.
Yes, Jason?
Thank you, Cheryl. Is, Andy, I was wondering if you could address real quickly, just in case anybody doesn't know that, who else we hired to help us at the high school with remediation? Yeah, thank you. I apologize. So Larry Slosson?
Slayson.
Thank you, apologize for that. So the, the high school board retained the services of Mr. Slayson just to advise them and to provide them additional set of eyes and just knowledge set. Within his work, he's done quite a bit of work around environmental projects. And so it's just, again, it's helpful to have that excerpt piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Thanks, Karen.
Sorry. With everything you're doing to mitigate the problem with the PCBs, where are we at cost? That picked up by the state?
Yeah, so, okay. So I, I don't have the actual number, so I wasn't prepared for that. But, so the state has affirmed to us that anything that has to do with remediation or mitigation at this point, excuse me, mitigation, is 100% reimbursable as long as it is approved by them ahead of time. So there's a slight turnaround time where we have to, so the tents, use that as an example. We had to provide them with a plan of how much it would cost. They give us a letter that it's approved and 100% reimbursable not to exceed cost. So whatever we believe that cost will be. And, and where I say that we've had some support from the AOE and the BEC is that if we find out originally the tents were going to cost us 10 bucks and now they're going to cost us 20 bucks, we can get that information up and we get an amended letter very quickly. The, the state did set aside 39 billion in the past year or so to reimburse schools. More, a little more than half of that was set aside for Burlington High School, which left about 13 million for the rest of the state. And, and so there, there's been some conflicting conversation about is the money already all spent? If the money, is it earmarked? So there's a difference between spent and earmarked. And, you know, but in my conversations with the state, they've indicated that currently the work we're doing will be reimbursed of everything that we're doing. So anything we do, so the work of having the consultants come in and do the air sampling, that's a cost. So that then has to get approved ahead of time. It was approved, they submitted it, I believe, Monday or Tuesday morning. It was approved Tuesday night and they were here Wednesday morning.
So you're not getting involved with having to bid out stuff?
If we go through the state, we don't because that is the advantage of our desk.
Thank you. A member of the high school board, I've been following this fairly closely and there are a few comments that I may make. State Senator Nada Hashim has been an unusually helpful resource for providing straight information about the situation. And there's a couple of very interesting things he had had to say. And the first is just forget about seeing any money from the current 13 million dollars that in theory was available to the schools, which were not Burlington. And he is in a fairly well-informed position to make that statement because he sits on Senate head. Another very interesting comment, which I think is worth bringing up, and that is that there was some misinformation provided within the last week or so about the ability of Bellows Falls Union High School to use outside facilities such as the auditorium, pardon, Bellows Falls Union High School to use outside facilities such as the auditorium of Bellows Falls Middle School. And Senator Hashim stated clearly and unequivocally that that was, that the notion that that, that those spaces needed to be PCB tested before we could use them was absolutely inaccurate. That information apparently originated with our Department of Environmental Conservation consultant even, heaven help me, I don't remember his last name. But Nada went on at some length to provide documentation that clearly indicates that was an inaccurate statement and there are no provisions that prevent us from using space outside of Bellows Falls Union High School apart parenthetically than applying common sense. And the final thing I want to say is that Attorney Larry Slayson put on one of the, I think, most dynamic board-level performances that I've ever seen by an attorney. And in fact, our recently departed colleague Mike Stack summed up this way. He said, "I would expect to find an attorney with those kinds of skills in Boston, but I would never imagine we'd find one in Bellows Falls." My final comment, which is this. Attorney Slayson also reviewed the Pietro Lynn suit as well as the suit which has been filed previously by the Attorney General Charity Clark. And his advice is might not see very much money because it all goes to the lawyers. He provided the figures that document. He provided the figures that documented that. He said, there is no harm you staying on the Pietro Lynn suit. And I have to say, having been the foremost critic of the way we became involved in that without our knowledge. That if it were to appear as an action item on the Union High School agenda, I would support him. Thank you, Cheryl.
All right, are there, Jason, yes?
Thank you, Cheryl. Um, uh, may I answer Kathy's question?
Who is it?
So um, one thing that I've done as the chair in the high school is um, our treasurer, Deb Wright, I asked her to um. Work shoulder to shoulder with with Jim in case there is something that is charged to us. That there be a line item on the P and L, I'll call it the P and L, or financial or wherever. And then if there's a credit, you know, a separate item to show. To show that we're not paying for something, just in case something slips by. So that's one thing that we've added to the. I'll call it the profit and loss statement to make sure that we're not in the weeds some five years down the road of an oopsie. Somewhere trying.
All right, I'm gonna say that probably in terms of the agenda, this topic was the superintendent's report. And if there were any questions of the superintendent for clarification, that would actually be the most appropriate thing to be doing. Uh, at this time, so let me put it that way. If there are any additional uh questions of the superintendent, I'd like to know that. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Andy, um, uh, made a, uh, Mr. Nader.
Nader.
Nader. Nader Hashim brought up, and I know in his letter, it said that um, he, the high school could use. The auditorium and the other, there was no problem with that. Where are we on that?
So so I'd like to clarify that when I made my statement at the Rocky Hand meeting about the use of the middle school. I was misquoted in the paper. Because I had used that as an example based on the fact that for reimbursement, it would need to be tested ahead of time, and that is the. Information that we received from Evan from DEC. The information that. Nader received was from Jill Briggs Campbell, who works for the AOE. I've since communicated with her and she apologized that she neglected that that email had been sent. And so that there was misinformation, that she provided Nader misinformation, Nader pardon me, uh, misinformation. Uh, as to what information we had been provided. So um. The use of the middle school or any other venue, we are still working out what we're gonna do. I mean, we have to look at it. Um, our biggest piece, and I spoke about it at panels I've been on, is transportation. We may actually have to look at hiring outside transportation if we have to, whether it's the middle school or whether it's. Any other, we talked to Walpole, we talked to other venues, um, because. We'll have to transport students if we're gonna use those venues for practice. We're gonna have to transport students to get them to those facilities for practice. And then if we're using them for games, we're gonna have to transport our students to get their brigade. So. The the bigger issue is not necessarily, are we gonna use the middle school or are we gonna use something else? It's. Can we even provide the transportation? So um Connor Bean has been working that out. Um, you know, as you know, we have uh middle school basketball, we have a vibrant program there that uses the gym. Um, and then we have multiple teams here at the high school that need access to a gym, and it's usually always a struggle. Just here at the high school with, if just the high school, who's significant practice time. And I don't want students practicing really late at night. And and so we might have to. We might have to be going to a moment. I mean, our kids need to sleep. I mean, we know that, so um. So we're going to be looking at multiple different uh pieces and it might not be, um, it's gonna be a lot of schedule.
Okay, I perhaps miss. Appreciate it, thank you. Any other questions for Andy?
I think in your report, you refer to the um RPS or the money, so you're gonna go into that and we definitely agree. With that, then, but so we'll head to the finance report, thank you.
So. I I wanna say, even though it seems like we've been uh in school now for months. We really have just begun. This is the twentieth, and so. Uh, a lot of items we've not initially encountered and um. We've got a ways to go. Uh, I just wanted to to kind of bring. Where I think you are. Uh. And I've tried to underline, you see, like if you go to page two, I put a dark line underneath the function.
Yeah, the functions are important, not expenditures, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Um, so. Kind of uh just breaks us apart on page three, which is the bottom at the top. Or it's Special Education twelve oh one. So. Um, I'll mention that I think. That we may be over budget for special education. Uh, we've got some high-cost students placed in high-cost uh tuition places. Now. The expense side will show a negative. I mean, I think you're gonna end up three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. But. There is the extraordinary cost reimbursement, meaning over sixty thousand. Did they get two X now? I mean, we get, we get uh much more than anticipated for the over six.
And I don't know the actual figure, I can find it out.
But I think, but the last, yeah, the last time they did for this year for extraordinary. People got like two X. And and usually you would get. The amount over sixty thousand dollars reimbursed to the district. So. I think you, I think you're gonna net okay with special education.
When you're saying two X for the money?
Twice the uh, twice the re- twice the reimbursement, so it's a, it's a net gain.
So so if I can clarify a little bit, so if a student. With transportation, tuition, and other needs that that student may need at that other school costs us a hundred thousand dollars. In the past, the state would pay only everything above sixty thousand dollars. So that's that extraordinary cost, you get the forty thousand dollars back. What Jim's saying is there seems to be a new equation that. Additional dollars will come back for that student, not just the forty thousand dollars.
And and I'm unclear as to what what the calculation is, but Brad James, who does that area, said, hey. What it is. Um. So anyways, this gives you a little glimpse as to the line items involved, and I'm on page nine now. And I um, probably seven lines down. Where it says salaries, accounting, fiscal services. You know, we're in the negative. And that's page nine, and the, can everybody find the page numbers? Sorry, it's down in the the right-hand corner. Uh. But we've hired a payroll person. And I, this is gonna be uh an expense that we didn't necessarily budget for. Uh, maybe we should have, but we didn't budget for it. So it's, we're gonna run over here. Um, the other area that we will run over. Is uh page eleven. And where I've got an asterisk in transportation equipment. Obviously, we're leasing buses now and we will be over in this area. Now, I and I just will say, even though it shows us twenty one thousand one eighty six for the good as a balance. Understand, as the year goes on, um. We may end up going over that, and I just will say, we still have buses that need repair and and. We'll see how we turn out, but. I think you're gonna be over. Um, the last area is um. On food service. Understanding that we didn't budget the summer food service program, so we're over four hundred thousand. Shouldn't be a concern because on the revenue side, you've got a balance. So. All in all, I'm just saying, you, on the expense side, you could be a million dollars over what we expect, expected and budgeted. But with the additional revenues, I I think you're gonna be close. I think you're gonna be okay. So that's just uh. Uh, where I think we are now.
Just uh, Jim, on that last point.
Yeah.
The the uh, the negative four hundred ninety four thousand. That would basically, this is an oversimplification. That would basically be the cost of the food and providing the food that was incurred during the summer. Uh. To provide the food service during the summer.
Yes.
Uh, the uh, that that was not budgeted last year. But this year on our revenue in two thousand twenty four, we're going to show any revenue from. The summer program along with the revenue for the full year.
That's correct, yeah.
So when we look at our financial statement come the end of the year. We will be able to say whether the food service was a plus or a minus.
That's correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Um, on page twelve, you have an asterisk and negative eight hundred thousand, what is that?
Uh, that was some earlier uh calculation. And. Um. I probably didn't add in the transportation piece, the negative on the transportation. So when I say a million dollars. It's eight hundred plus the two. That's, you know, right now, uh, where I think you're gonna be. And I just don't want you to be surprised, you know, we we know we're gonna be in the negative. But we also know we're gonna offset with additional revenues. So. We manage it and that's, that's how we wanna run it. Okay, any, any other questions that I can give?
Are you gonna hand out additional comments?
Uh, just a couple?
I'm asking because the ones that were sent out to the board are not the one you just handed us. And so we have a little work with the system still, right?
Yes, yes, and. Uh, well, we're talking about the system, I can, in the financial aspect. So. Uh, I just wanna let you know. In the conversion, and when I say conversion. Really wasn't a conversion going from e-finance to infinite visions. This was new from the ground up. And all of those digits on every individual that we have in our system had to be placed in there. And it was a, it was a heavy load to get up and running. And and sometimes we think. Flip the switch. And this was not flip the switch, and I assure you, um. I I think, I think it surprised many, many people of saying. What's the issue? Come on, this is, this is, you know, today. You must have that rough and running. We're still not there. And again, I think it'll be another three months before all of the components are in there. We've run into a couple of issues which, a- as you may hear from employees, they didn't get a paper stub. And. Again, the Infinite Vision software. Has an issue. Maybe with getting an email attached to the pay stub. But in the end, within a, within a couple of weeks' time, um. We're gonna have employee access where they can go in. Any, any week, a pay week they want to get their information, tax information. They can go in, get the W two, earn it off. So we are gonna get there. We just haven't as yet. And uh. There are other stuff that's, that's just, you know, creating, I mean. When we hire somebody. School started on.
Thirty first.
Thirty first. And when we hire somebody on the thirty first, teaching staff, we need them. Um. It's not always easy to get them into the system. Sorry. And I I I do say that, um. We have to adjust. Because it takes time. There's, there's a little bit more um. Quality assurance and making sure all of this stuff is tied together. You know, and and again, we've got to do um some better preparing in that area. Um. And I I take this on as, as my issue, my problem, and I'm just sharing you, if if you're looking for where's Jim failing. Okay, I'm coming clean with you. Um. In some of our contracts. And again, I I haven't had time to spend a lot, and I apologize, Andy. Uh, but. Support staff, you know, the paras, well. The pair of contracts is, you know, twenty three eighty seven an hour. Great. And I look at the number of hours that they've got, usually seven hours or whatever it is. Well. I want to tell you, last year, because I'm used to having an amount of money that I've got to budget. Well, I didn't have it on the contracts last year. The seven days. Of holidays. Never got added in. I missed it. And again, I I should have a contract there that has the number of days, the hours per day. And the number of of the the hourly pay. Clearly. We're not there. We are not there, and I I'm trying to get there, you know, phase two. I'm I'm just not there now, I'll be honest with you. Um. It's, it's something that we wanna get to and we will. So. Any questions about my other failings?
You're doing fine.
Well, you know, obviously, I know that that people are disappointed that the switch just couldn't be flipped and everything rolled. But this is hard, hard, hard work.
I I think we might, that you finish your report and then so let me just say questions. Yeah, let's, let's have you go ahead and finish your report.
Um, and the only other thing that I wanna say is, uh, so the auditors, you'll have it in hand. November thirtieth, card copy. So, um.
Twenty twenty two, twenty three fiscal year, you're saying?
For, for the twenty three.
Right, exactly.
Yes, yes, so it'll be, it'll be in hand and and hopefully we can go over it quickly. Uh.
That's great, thank you.
This, this other paper, and I've, I've given this to uh the finance committee. But this is awesome in that now you can look and see who the hell, who the heck is in your, who the heck is in your um. System in the U S. It's, this is by department, you know, central office, food service, grants. And where this becomes important, Andy and the boards will uh will look down through. Because we've, we've done a lot of eser and who who uh will have to be shifted into the general fund. And uh, it just helps you ascertain who it is, how many, we're looking at. Um, I think it's great information.
All that's.
Uh, no, that depends like.
It's not all eser.
The central office is general fund.
Okay.
Schools, uh, the food service is general fund. And uh, early education is uh Medicaid. And I'm looking, so page seven, page seven, Kathy, is where grant-funded employees start.
Oh, yeah.
And and grant-funded employees include title, title employees.
Yes, yes, everybody.
I'll even back it up, I, I think it begins on page.
Right.
Starts on page four. Well, all those posts are not just after.
Yes. Yep, that's right. But I think this is this is something that you can dovetail into some of your budget. Uh study and information and data. Again, we're 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 getting there on the on the budget side of things as well.
Uh Andy uh Andy did uh. In his report, he sent out the. The eser positions. Okay, so the. When it comes to budgeting. You know, we don't usually do much with title. Right, teachers, but we certainly, this time around. If you've got eser funded positions this year, that's going to be an issue as to whether they. Get into the local budgets uh or not, so. Uh there is, as I said, Andy provided a two-page report that that has those people.
And and I just want to say. Typically, Title One is is. You know, usually not changed, but we've had years. When, for whatever reason, they have reduced it. And many districts chose to bring those people into the general fund. Because it's great support for uh reading and math, and they they're fantastic. Obviously needed.
Clarification if I can, Jim, I can see grant funding employees. To Jake's point, this doesn't indicate whether it's title or it's eser on this document.
On this document, it does not, it does not.
Okay, that's it. We have to cross check from the other. That will help us if we can actually see in one document.
Yeah, because it's it's a two-page.
Yes.
Two-page report.
Yeah. And then and then it it just from a, you know that I've asked for. Repeatedly, and I understand the system's issues, but it's so important for the board to have a chance to look at these materials in advance of the meeting.
Yeah.
And so I don't know the issue that had other documents sent out to us and not. These today, so maybe coordinate, because I know it's an improvement that staff can do it. But we need to get. On the same page so that it's the correct documents that we're all.
Yes, and I I apologize. When I looked. I looked at them. Um they were they were not um. They were not summarized by um. By funds, and so I went back and I tried to get another another report, sorry.
You know, we need that.
Yeah.
So, thank you. But it's, I mean, I'm excited to see the reports come early. I just want.
I know, I agree.
Anything else for Jim? You have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, but you you said something about holidays not in there. It just that mean they didn't include you or they got paid and you had to put them separately or?
That. That in the in the old contract. Um it had obviously the the school days. You know, the hundred and seventy five, is it seven?
Yeah, one seventy nine for.
So, but there are holidays as well. They get by contract, they get seven holidays. And those holidays just weren't visible to me. And I thought they were already included in those days, but they weren't. So.
Talking about budgetary putting it in the system, not that they didn't get paid for those days.
Not that they didn't get paid.
On his end of trying to figure out. Employee costs X amount of dollars. He if if you don't buy, so so we're adjusting how we do contracts where it says a hundred and seventy nine plus seven. So the numbers there, so he's seen, or it just says a total of number of days, so.
And and I just want to say, in addition, for para. Twenty three dollars and seventy five cents. Okay, and then we have these add-ons for, you know, if they have to do certain duties, dollar. Another duty, dollar, and I mean. It's it's very um. Problematic in trying to get and ascertain an absolute true figure. Of the cost. That's all I want to try to do, and I I I don't want to oversimplify it because it's important. But I gotta be able to get at those costs to put them into. My budget and make sure that the contracts and payments for payroll are correct.
Thank you. Uh Tina or Hardy, any questions for Jim? Okay, thank you both very much. Jim, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you, and we know you're making extraordinary progress, so.
So was.
Appreciate it. Paying in on a nightmare. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh thank you. Moving ahead to then openness, this is mostly for uh discussion. Would you like to start? The first topic is to review the bylaws, the board guidelines and open meeting law. This has been on the agenda, was on uh at the most recent meeting, and we had uh some. Review by council about really roles and responsibilities, and we continue to work on. What it is we can do and amend uh to help give us also structure. Uh and understanding again, a better understanding of how to serve as as board members as we all want to do. So we have resent you of the bylaws that are being proposed for revision and update. I'd like to quickly walk through and point out the changes there. The committee that was formed uh when we raised the need to revise the bylaws. Bylaws with this uh S U board, the committee sort of loose would be Rizkibi, Priscilla Lambert, myself and Andy. And so we spent some hours working on this and then bringing it up to date. We've sent it to council and then adding to all of that for additional clarification. Uh as I mentioned earlier, uh Andy and I spent an hour with uh Sean Chu, we have counsel today. So what I want to point out. First of all, is that the one-page document of guidelines that was sent out. Has been reviewed by council and is is accurate. I think um I've heard some questions in the past from David Clark, and I would acknowledge that. I know the link now works. Um and that's one aspect, but I want everybody to know, these are guidelines. Similarly. The guidebook that Andy has sent out to us more than once and always provides to new board members has been reviewed like that, so. So these are guidelines, and you're just things for us to know are are recommended norms for how we govern ourselves. And how we um operate in 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 our public uh in our public roles. So I'm not going to spend time on those two, on the guidebook or the guidelines tonight. But I do want to point out where the changes exist in the proposed uh changes to the bylaws, the byline. So in today's meeting with Sean Chu, I started with the question, why do we have bylaws? You know, what's the what's the reason uh for this? And his answer was really to give us structure, uh to give us a sense of a place to refer. If we need guidance for roles and responsibilities. Uh and it's always a way to help us with our own accountability. Uh that's really uh the overall reason for them. He also though said that by statute, a supervisory union board. Is to be made up of three people from each of the member boards, so that's by law. That it's three persons from each of the member uh district organizations. So with that, it's just a little bit of background. If you look at the document, and Andy, you brought extra copies. If anybody needs some. Does anybody need the marked-up copy? We sent out a revised version late afternoon because of some additional changes.
Actually, you know, we don't have extra. The one thing it is making up, but I can go running down if you need.
Uh okay, I don't, I think we can point out where the where the changes are pretty easily. Uh and I actually, well, so let me just go through them, but like. You can see that we're we're changing the name just to reflect the fact that Westminster is now independent and that Athens and Grafton are merged. So that's what that's about. Under um meetings, it used to say that the high school board would meet in a joint session. Uh it doesn't seem necessary, like as as your regular meetings and like board can have minutes and such. And so I'm not, we we this the committee didn't feel like in October or November of this year. That the there needed to be a joint session. Yeah, Jake's go ahead.
Well, you invite board, and like I said, like I mentioned earlier. It says it composed of three three reps from each of the constituent school districts.
All right.
Where does it say it has to be elected?
Oh, in section seven, we'll come to that.
Okay, all right.
Um so moving then, you just put in to clarify that we operate by rubber rules of uh order for small boards. Will we not put the section on the treasurer? If you look at page two of page two. We looked at. The fact that some of the duties of this treasurer designated to the finance office, the business office. And so. That's why some of those things are deleted. But then put in the caveat to fulfill all of the duties of the treasurer and system for that one. But but our treasurer doesn't invest all. Or just our treasurer reconcile all of the accounts on whether basis. That's not an business office, but does anyone comment on that, Chris?
No. I do not.
Okay. Um this article five, attendance and participation, the previous version of the bylaws. It includes the language that uh all members of the boards of each of the constituent school boards might attend any board meeting. Including but not limiting to attending all executive sessions. And that has now been removed. So that only uh board members who are invited by a board to participate in an executive. Executive session would do so. I think we learned that in a rather dramatic way, even though it was in our bylaws previously. It's no longer there. That's our purpose.
Are you taking uh questions, Jim? Or shall I wait till the end?
I would appreciate that. I can definitely do, thank you. So on uh the quorum, just changed it to uh a majority, which again has been recommended to us based on the statute. Jakes McCollum, Article Seven is where it talks about how. The S U board would be established. And this is what I read yesterday, and we hadn't been focused on it. And so that's it was a surprise to me, because certainly Westminster has been less formal uh about appointing. We have appointed our members to the board.
I see, yeah.
All right, let's wait. With um majority vote in executive committee existing. Down below in Article Ten, there's already a reference to executive committee. We thought it was useful to insert the law that described the executive committee. So it was already in the bylaws, but this provides a little more detail. And uh in this particular. Article H.
Why why not do it in Article Ten? Where it refers to the executive committee.
Uh because of the way it appeared in the law, it was, we found it in this part of the law uh. Related to majority vote for some reason.
Because the the law is pretty clear.
The law is clear. This is language from the law.
So I I mean, it just it's it's just kind of redundant.
They thought because you, among others, had asked him any questions about it, it might be useful to make sure the law was here and was explicit.
No, but I I think it's, like I said, it's in Section Ten, so it would be. We could expand the language in Section Ten.
I think the original. Headings were. I mean, we kind of went with the headings we had in the original document. I just think. Article nine. Or is it, is that an eight? Sorry. Was it sort of already existed, and so we just went on to that.
So let me just point out a few other things, then we'll come back for explanatory comments and additional questions. In Article Ten, there's additional language to directly from the law. To specify what the supervisory union board's responsibility is related to curriculum. And there's another article that differentiates against local autonomy versus the supervisory union. Board's responsibility. These two paragraphs inserted, they came from the internist specifically. Uh I think. The only.
This is from the law, this this language that you put in?
Yes. Uh the uh all of this is actually consistent with the law, which is why we. Not only made proposed changes, but had it reviewed once again uh by the. A place that differentiates between the supervisory union's overall responsibility for curriculum. And what the local districts can do has been further refined, and you see the changes there. It's in Article eleven. And Chris Kibbe, actually, in our earlier discussions as a committee about this, was clear that by statute. The local school districts do appoint the staff, and we're the ones that hire teachers, for example. But when it comes to areas such as organization of instruction, selection of instructional materials. Because it's the state's responsibility and overall the S U's responsibility to establish all of the curriculum requirements. Our autonomy is more limited by law. And that's what this language hopes to clarify there.
And where is this one?
It's Article eleven.
I start at the bottom of five and go. You know, it's hard to.
I think.
Well, I'm sorry, it is ten, eleven, twelve.
Requirements there too, because this is only based on, it's under the S U requirements on your local. So that may be something we have to clarify.
Well, it is, it is, what you just said, it's ten.
I think the last, we can come back with with questions and additional discussion uh. The last one where there's some significant changes for now are under expenses and proportionate share. And we just thought some clarification was needed, and the change that has to do with. It's specific, when you do the count of how many students, how many enrolled students, it previously said I could have one. The law says actual number of enrolled students as of the fortieth day of school. So we made that change to make it consistent with the law. And then the the point is where things are not uh defined by formulas, that if there is additional money. How would that be reapportioned? So that's uh specified there. And the very last uh amend article is about the topic of amendments, which is what this is all about. So it's Article eighteen. And these bylaws may be amended only after a proposed amendment has been worn into meeting of each of the constituent school boards. So that's where it comes back to the high school, to Athens, Grafton, to Westminster, to Grafton again. And it has to be, these proposed changes, these bylaws must be adopted by a majority of the members. So we're at that place now. I think that with these couple of additional changes today. Because they came in for the hearing, and we met middle of the day today. I'd actually like to refer it back to the committee for one more look. And then I want you to know that it's going to be coming out to each of the chairs. Uh for you to take action at your local. Board meetings. Anything we want to add to today?
No, I I I think quite a bit of. Time, I appreciate the the time spent um by by going through it and looking at it. I think it's helpful to have some documentation to help guide it. I I mean. Sometimes I I think I've reported to you all, it's sometimes it's. It's like a little mystery, like you you find something all of a sudden, and I, you know, stepping into this world, didn't even know these existed. And then all of a sudden it pops up in your, you know, in my Google Drive somewhere. So I I think I just shared something with you today, Jason, from nineteen sixty-six, right? And it's like, I didn't even know I had it, and I would be able to find it, so. Is that your first story? Well done, I'm well done. Um but anyway, so I I I think it just helps with that clarification.
So let me open it to questions and comments, and David, you were first, so go ahead.
Okay. Well, let me begin with the comment. And that comment is that the supervisory union is a service bureau for the boards. And um as a service bureau for the boards. They supervise, you have an obligation to ensure. That the members of the member districts have access to the supervisory. Union board meetings in order to be properly informed. union board meetings in order to be properly informed and also be able to uh ask questions which clarify roles responsibilities. Some of that is referred to here. I will uh take note that I find it extremely interesting that um Article five um takes a different view of the roles and responsibilities of board members by limiting participation only to the voting members boards. And that's um to be polite, a disincentive toward active participation in matters involving the supervisory union board. And I will also comment under five that the uh language which says uh uh all members of school director, all of the boards of school directors of each of the constituent school districts may and any there is a little bit of um uh ambiguity about that because it is not clear if that refers to supervisory union board meetings or whether involves to uh whether it refers to meetings of the um district board. So possibly that language needs to be tightened up a little bit. I uh take note also of the fact I have a note here and I did uh notify the chair or who it was at. And then let the message maybe about it, maybe he didn't share all that. That um I believe that local bylaws take precedence over supervised reunion bylaws with regards to whether uh members, voting members, supervisory union district are elected or appointed. And uh one other two other comments I will make. Uh one is that um I think that I should share a rather full legal opinion with this body, which uh like lawyers do, that went on for a page and a half. What it said was uh that all board members must have access to executive session deliberations of the supervisory union board so they can give informed counsel their voting members uh in order to reflect the um needs and desires and wishes of that board uh in terms of how their membership votes the matters that appear to what was for. So uh we can we can test uh we can test uh Sean Hui's definition or definition of the open meeting law because I will copy it all or copy all the board members and um see if that generates a complaint under the open meeting law. Then we can have a uh proper formal uh legal test of that uh position that's taken in minutes. Last, I will comment about the high school board joint meeting. And that is the fact that when we were trying to fend off the most pernicious effects of the Act forty-six for school mergers, one of the um one of the things that we thought might improve um uh the reception of our proposed uh alternative governance structure, which we took to the state board and the state board said, uh wonderful. And merges anyway. Um and that was the notion that because the high school is the convergence point for all of the students within the W N E S U district, that it was useful on a periodic basis for the members of those constituent districts, which are feeders, the high school, have an opportunity to sit down and talk about it. I think it would be unfortunate if that uh opportunity to discuss um education at the high school level were lost. So I would urge uh whoever your committee is to strike that language. Thank you.
To reinsert it.
Well, I'm I'm saying, uh yes, thank you. Strike the strike. How's that?
I don't, it's just a question for you about that. I don't remember my time a media joint meeting of the high school. Oh, asking me to speak up. I'm sorry. I personally don't remember a joint meeting of the S U board and the high school board. Do you, Chris? Are you?
No.
Oh, a different subject?
No.
Yeah, okay.
If you were asking me. But I wanted uh to there there is another document, the document that we presented to the state board that David referred to. That they said that's great, but we're going to merge Westminster and Athens Grafton anyway.
Right.
And that document has a piece in it about a twice a year meeting of all the boards to discuss areas of possible cooperation. And I think maybe that's what Mr. Clark is thinking about. But and that document, as far as I know, is still in effect. If you can dig it up somewhere from Andy's drive.
I got it.
And yeah.
No, we found that.
Yeah, right.
We included it in the guidelines.
Right. My position on this is these high school S U board meetings never took place, so they're not very useful if they never take place. These other meetings theoretically could take place.
And we have done some of that.
And so I my uh assessment would be leave it the way it is with it struck out, go by the other document. If you want to have more meetings, you know, go for it and we can talk about ways to cooperate about having more meetings.
I think there may be other questions. Yeah, James.
I have a number of issues. The uh I'm glad our boards are going to get a shot at this, but uh and and this is opinion, uh obviously. On Article seven, I uh see, I don't I don't see what the need for an executive committee is. Okay. I know that uh there's this ad hoc group that's called itself an executive committee. This it it's supposed to evaluate uh Andy.
By contract.
Yeah, well, by his contract, but there's nothing in our bylaws
That's correct.
that spell out duties and responsibilities, nor have I ever have have we ever dealt with it at the beginning of the year, I don't think, as to who the executive committee is. Okay, so uh my feeling is uh as a member of Rockingham Board, uh I don't want to give up my board's opportunity to critique superintendent. Okay, and so so I think before I bought into a composition of the meeting of an executive committee, I'd like to know what their duties and responsibilities are, are, okay? So I think we should, I think we should do that first. Uh and as I said at the at our previous meeting, the S U board was not set up to make decisions for the towns. It was to try to affect the economies of scale and the management of the of our business. And and I think we do, we tried to do that here. So uh but uh it is because of the compositions of the board, the minority of the student body or the taxpayer contribution has the majority on this board. And so if you are going to set up an executive committee, I believe it should have at least fifty percent of the membership. Obviously, you'd have to have more than three. You wouldn't have to have would be from Rockingham. Okay, so that's that's that issue. The second one is on Article ten. And the the language from the previous draft, this is bullet number seven. Uh this is under the business property to be transacted properly. Properly. Okay, it, the previous draft said approving S U-wide curriculum documents as recommended by the W N E S U superintendent. Okay, you've now put in establishing a supervisory union-wide curriculum. Okay, by either developing the curriculum or assisting the member districts, uh blah, blah, blah. Okay, now this this board isn't going to be setting the curriculum.
This actually comes straight from the law.
Yeah, that
That's preposterous.
Reference, right. Um it's it's sixteen A three B.
But it's, is it from the supervisory union uh law?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I looked at the supervisory union law and it was pretty short.
Yeah.
So, you know, my feeling is I'm very content to be in a position to approve the the curriculum that the S U delivers to us. I think they have curriculum committees and all that kind of stuff. I don't think this board should be establishing the curriculum.
I get that question.
Okay, so so that's that's the second one that I mentioned. Okay?
I agree with Jigs on that last statement.
Thanks. Thank you, team.
Yeah, thanks for the support. Let's see now, that's page four.
You like the previous one better where it talked about
Approving the, yeah.
From the superintendent.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, so then under the agenda and minutes, and this is a suggestion, I don't have a problem with. It now says three days, right, to get to to get the agenda.
Right.
But it, what I think it should say is that if there's actionable items on the agenda or informational items that are critical, like for example, this document, those things ought to be provided three days before.
It was supporting materials, yeah.
Then on sections twelve.
Local autonomy, that one?
That's the local autonomy.
Yeah.
And um this is where Chris spoke up about, apparently, Chris, the the language here is um assigns responsibility that the local boards have. I'm trying to understand that.
You're talking about, you are talking about twelve, right?
Twelve, yeah.
So an area such as staff appointment, each school.
Yeah, that's been added.
Not in in areas such as staff appointment, no, has not been added. The other thing has been. Each school district has statutory authority to make decisions in areas such as organization.
Well, it looks, if it's if it's staff appointment.
Yeah, we inserted some words into an existing sentence here. If you take away the underline.
Staff appointments, we have the for for Rockingham, we have our responsibilities.
That's correct.
This board has some responsibilities.
That's what it says here. Each school district has authority.
Well, my question is what was wrong with the language that was in there?
So so
Why does it need to be amended?
If I may, I mean, one of one of the um things we talked about, we talked about it at length with Sean today. So the supervisory union under statute is supposed to set the curriculum for the districts. And the way it was previously worded, um there was confusion that each local district would have some autonomy to set their own curriculum. And so to try and clarify that that piece, because the local district cannot cannot void itself of the supervisory curriculum, which is based back to the state standards. So I use the example of um in creationism versus evolutionism. So if a if we were, if the S U curriculum was to teach evolution and a district said for their constituents and then the board made a vote to say, we're not going to teach evolution in our school, that would be going opposite of the curriculum that was established by the S U. And so what what a local district has the authority to do is say, we want to add on to the the established curriculum, so we want to enhance, but they can't supply. So it's it's nuanced around curriculum. It it's it it and it
But I, you know, I I'm not comfortable with this. They can mess with it. They can.
It's not, it's not messing with it. So so the the other example we used was Studio Y. So we have our established curriculum with reading and mathematics and and all that stuff. Westminster, as as the the board values the um the project-based learning that students get through Studio Y. They're not taking away from the curriculum we've established. They're adding on to it and enhancing it as they feel. So that that's
Why doesn't it have to be in this bylaw?
Well, because under statute, the supervisory union establishes that the curriculum. And I'm speculating here that when the S U was originally um formed, that the local districts wanted to retain some autonomy around curriculum years ago. And that now was in conflict when we, when with the current statute, the previous language was in conflict with the statute. So we're there. There was some work to try and clean that up.
But I don't think this, I don't think this board should be setting the tone for whether Westminster Town Board wants to do something with their curriculum. We set the, we should set the, we should approve the curriculum established by the S U. Okay, and then and then if it's if by law, they are allowed to do that. Fine. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be part of the S U bylaws.
Yeah. But I see that that Priscilla has her hand up and I have my hand up.
I I had before, so.
And you've had it for quite a while.
No, you've had it for a while. So I'm, it's responding to you, actually.
But I got, I have a couple of other
I know, quickly, and I want to call on Priscilla.
Okay.
Can I interrupt you, Jigs, because my comment has to do with that same one that you were on? So would it
Yeah, but I think you have to wait until I finish my comment.
Okay, but yours is for another another one. Can I do this one?
No.
I'm sorry, everybody. Let's let him go ahead and finish, but I want everybody to be as succinct as you can. Thank you.
Okay, and then the last oh yeah, the last one is on uh Article fourteen.
Okay.
Okay, and it says here this can, the constituent school district shall pay a proportionate share of the annual operating expenses of the supervisory union office in accordance with the assessment for, and it was now in place. Okay. Except that the, okay, now in place, okay? So my feeling is that at the end of this section, okay, if there's a surplus, uh it should be distributed proportionate share as the as of the expenses uh at the top line. Why wouldn't it, why if, in other words, if we if we agree to divvy the expenses for this year in this manner, if there's a surplus, we should divvy the surplus that same manner.
I think that's what it says.
It doesn't. It says you have to vote it. As soon as practical boards shall determine how any surplus of the supervisory union budget uh for the previous fiscal year shall be apportioned to the member district.
I think that's a statute thing, but uh oh.
Uh I think I think it's just yeah, I think it's just because, you know, why would you, I mean, we, when we, when we vote the budget, we were basically voting the proportion of it.
Right, okay.
And we ought to carry that right through to the
Got it. On the list for the attorney.
That's my, those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
Um going back to the local autonomy, um just in answer to somewhat to Jigs, um I thought very hard for this language that was in there for the reason that if I go back to the law for the local districts, I can definitely um support that. And I think it's something that we need to go back And I think it's something that we need to go back to, um, when we get together and talk about that. Because staff appointments, yes, your organization of instruction could be simply whether you want to teach it at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, the end of the year, whether you want to have it, what, what schedules you want for it to be through the day, any of that thing. So, that to me is definitely, um, up to the local district and how the school is, is determining that and supporting your own schools. Selection of the instructional materials is if you want to use a particular, um, set of instructional stuff versus, um, what Rockingham might want one, Branton might want one, and Westminster might want another. So, those are all within the local stuff. And I think that's why we left it the way it was, I can't see the changes at the moment, I have the old one sitting in front of me. But yes, Jigs, that was in support of what you were saying, because then.
Cause there was a lot of stuff added here, yeah.
We're going to look at that again. Um, I also had questions on, on the fourteen, um, as far as some of the new wording and, uh, we're going to go back and make sure that that doesn't change it. My question actually had to do with the, the factors that it currently says that the factors will be used for, for all of them, and the new wording kind of to me changes it to only ones that are different than them. So, we will look at that within the, um, once report comes to each of the boards anyway.
Okay, for next steps, Karen, go ahead. So, you can ask your question.
Yeah, I, I, I guess it's, it's confusing to me about they're state statutes, but we have to abide by it. We, this is not our, you know, we didn't create this whole thing. What you've done is, you know, taken out some things and added some stuff. So, to me, we have to look at the additions and, but the thing itself is a state statute that we have to respond to at the supervisory union. So, that's, I mean, if I'm correct about this, that's what I understand. So, it feels like to me, we're thinking that we've created this, and therefore, we're going to critique this as though it were created by the supervisory union or somebody else. So, that's all I'm wanting to say. I, I felt that the, you know, when I read this, there wasn't a lot of change, it was just clarifying terminology. So, that's all I'm wanting to say. And it feels that there's a conversation as though these statutes were created by us as opposed to the state, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, we have got some additional items tonight, I'm going to acknowledge Jason, and then I'm going to wrap this discussion up with some summary comments, and we'll go on, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Cheryl. Um, I'm actually, I, I think I heard a few minutes ago, um, I can't remember who said it, but, uh, the word norms came up, or normal operating procedure. And something that was brought up, and I'm, I'm asking for advice. Uh, so, something that was brought up at the high school board was to have some sort of normal operating procedures of how we act as a board, so to speak. So, the way I'm looking at this is, this is kind of that, correct? So, there's no need to add additional on our board, normal operating procedures, if we adopt these, then it's one standard, basically.
If I can answer, there's a combination of things, I think the combination of the bylaws, the guidelines document that was sent to everybody, and the guidebook that Andy's put together give you the foundation for the norms for the operating, and I would recommend to the high school board that you take a look at that. And then, if you want to add to it, if it gets different and more at the high school level, that would be fun, I'm.
Thank you.
Yep. So, to bring this together, we will take the additional questions and comments, we being the committee, this being Priscilla and Chris and Andy and I, will take the questions and comments you need tonight and review them and come back to you before you take it out to your respective boards. We will also, once again, get legal counsel, uh, because it has to be consistent with state law. David, I would ask you.
Oh, I was going to hold it for Director's comment.
Uh, excuse me, I have a request.
Oh, question.
That you offered a list of, of statements that you had questions about, and I'd like you to put them in writing, so that we.
They are in writing, but I can transcribe them so that you can read it.
Please, put them in writing so that we can share them with the attorneys and get a response to you on them. Okay, with that, the next item, uh, on the agenda is the review of the ESER and ARP monies.
Yeah, I noticed the title, so I apologize.
Not ARP.
ARP, not ART.
Right, I like that art.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think it probably, it proved the field, I answered questions that, that board might have, I just want to point out that under ESER two, um, we are still spending and, and purchasing, um, so some of these, um, all of these encumbrances haven't all happened, but we're still working on some of that, so, um, this is only, you know, as good as you can see it, uh, of September first, so, just to, to clarify that, but, um, I think it um, trying to, I don't want to go through the minutia of going to each line unless you'd like me to, but I can answer a specific question. How would you like me to proceed?
You're looking at an document that you'd like to in your report, is that what you're?
I, I, um, I, I'm looking at, yeah, this is, um, there's two different, uh, ESER ones that, um, were linked in, in the document, I just printed them out, so.
So, so you're, you're working from what was in your report?
Yes.
Okay, I just wondered if there, if there are questions appropriate, or if you want to give a high-level summary.
I do.
Jigs, you have questions?
Yeah.
Okay. We can start with that.
Okay, uh, it, Andy, the, um, it's more of a conceptual question. Um, the, uh, ARP ESER, uh, which is the, the third one.
Correct.
The thirteen million, right?
Yeah.
Thirteen million, okay. Um, looking through this, through the sheets here, it, and I, I probably missed a couple. But it looked like about seven point four million was allocated to, uh, infrastructure issues. And it's all on that page, the second page, two, two, uh, like from the middle, I think, four hundred on down to five hundred.
So, twenty percent of ARP ESER, a minimum of twenty percent of ARP ESER had to be set aside for loss of learning.
Right, so that's, if by my calculator, the seven point four is fifty-six percent of the total. Okay? And you said at least twenty has to be spent, okay? And, so, my, my question is, why, why didn't you allocate more for infrastructure?
Why didn't I allocate more, this was a committee that worked together, uh, we put the information out, we, we had to do it, it wasn't just one person making these decisions, so, when we went and put it out to the public, we saw feedback on how to spend dollars and what people wanted.
Well, the feedback, I mean, the feedback that I provided at this, at this board was to spend every dollar you could on infrastructure, um, and, uh, not forty-four percent of the, uh, not fifty-six percent. I mean, that's the only input I had a chance to give, I wasn't on the ESER committee.
Well, I, I mean, Jigs, back when I took over, there had already been an established, um, work on developing, we continued that work, we put it out to folks, we held, uh, uh, meetings to gain stakeholder information and proceed it forward. I mean, one person's opinion is one person's opinion, we bring it all together in a collective group.
No, I just.
We, we put that out numerous times, it's, and, and we've adjusted as we've gone along with our plan.
I'm not sure if I can interject just for a minute, right, we're talking about the same numbers, because we're looking at a high school is five million something, we've got all these capital improvement, infrastructure projects, and that doesn't seem to be.
I've got the report here.
But they're adding up to more than.
Seven point four million.
You said four point seven a minute ago.
Oh, seven point four. Out of thirteen, which is fifty-six percent.
Okay.
Okay? And, um, so as a board member, my, my, my opinion is that we have missed an opportunity to allocate more money to infrastructure. Uh, and, uh, you know, if, uh, uh, if it's, if, I guess Andy says it's the committee that, that made the problem. So, like I said, I, I wasn't on the committee. Uh, I never really was that enthusiastic about that committee. Uh, but, uh, but again, uh, I'm, I'm a board member, I'm looking at the way money's spent. And, you know, when you look at these, these pages plus the ESER one, uh, and you look where the decisions were made.
So, all of these monies have not yet been spent, but they've all been approved by the state where they would be in this document. But they've not all been spent, and our wish list of things, including for infrastructure, was more than the money we had available. I know that is.
Yeah, this, like I say, if there's other items that didn't make this list, I, I'd ask him to put it on the list. I'm just looking at the report.
Okay. Jim has a question.
Yeah, I just, uh, Andy, what, um, on the second page of that one, it says not yet budgeted in GMS, what is that? Seventy-two thousand one hundred.
So, GMS is the, uh, grant management system.
Okay.
And so, if it hasn't been inputted into the, the system.
Does that mean it's up for grabs?
Oh, there we could put that right into. So, again, continue this, what, where are you referring to?
Uh, the last item on the ARP ESER.
What page are we looking?
Uh, two of two. It says, um, in parentheses, blank.
Oh, yeah.
And then it says not yet budgeted seventy-two thousand one hundred.
Yeah, so as we, um, uh, currently, ARP ESER is, we call it open, we, we, uh, requested an amendment on it. And so, what we try, what we've worked to do is, as we've had certain strategies, they either the AOE has come back that we originally put in, the AOE has said, no, we're not going to approve that. Or, we've gone back and, and I use the term clawback money, something that we already had a strategy on, we know we've already spent uh, last year, let's say a salary wasn't what an original salary was. We collected those monies, and so we have not allocated that yet back into another strategy. What I've worked to do is to put as much strategy into that high school HVAC line every chance I get. So, when Shirley Lynch was going through the grant and building it, that's why, because at that time, we haven't moved that mon, those dollars back into there, so.
Thank you.
So, I'm not sure if it is helpful to keep diving into this now, if you have, you know, because people are at different levels of preparedness and, and interest, I think, in the subject.
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to clarify, because I've just been trying to do the math. Um, seventy-one percent is towards infrastructure.
Well, you'll have to, you'll have to.
I'd be, I'd be happy to sit with you and go through it, because seventy-one, I'm just doing, and I'm doing quick rough math, but seventy-one percent based on what I know. I mean, I, we're talking from group prepared down to the upgrade of, of, of the HVAC system is actually nine point three million dollars, almost nine point four million dollars.
That was my memory, that, that, there was a lot more of it, that we were closer to the twenty percent for the loss of learning.
But I'm ha, I'm happy to sit with you, Jigs, and go through that, um, but, um, I think, you know, what we've really tried to do with ESER two, and, and we got to a point where, um, you know, it ends, um, the, the grant, um, runs out, uh, at the end of September here. So, we've really worked to try and, um, spend as many dollars as possible, and not leave any money on the table. Um, there came a point with the state that they said you can't make any more amendments. And it, it just got to a point we couldn't go back in, you know, so, we had a line that, and we hadn't finished up um, in our system with our, uh, audits and whatnot. Uh, we might not have been able to spend every single penny, which is something we really tried to do. Um, there's always a liquidation period, so there's a possibility they may reopen it. And if they allow us some things, we will go back and try and spend every penny that we can, so.
Oh, thank you, the team will go to you, thank you.
Um, just wondering, I'm sorry if I missed this, but, uh, for all the items on this that are funded, the sa, the salaries that are funded by ESER, is there, are those positions that are planned to phase out at the end of ESER? Or is there a plan that the district has in place in order to fold those, to fold those into the budget? Or some of the?
I apologize, I mean, that's all, so, um, in my report, there's a third hyperlink, uh, list of specific salary positions, um, which we have recommendations in there, um, for how, um, local districts or the supervisory union may, um, look to use those pieces. Um, and so, some of those positions will, uh, ultimately come back to, to local budgets, uh, to figure out if, uh, that's something they want to, uh, try and absorb into their budget, uh, based on, some districts may say, uh, you know, we don't want to see an increase in any salary positions, but, um, principals may choose to that position. A position is more valued than, uh, an open position, and so they may choose to reallocate some funds. Um, some may look to add, uh, positions. Um, so, uh, we may look also to what we can use through title grants or other grant grants that we can obtain, that we might be able to, uh, continue to support some of these positions. So, uh, an example of that would be the dean of students here at the high school. This current year, it's being funded through ARP ESER. Next year, it's being funded through the Greater Connections Grant that we were awarded. And so, when we went after that grant, we went after it with the knowledge that ESER was stunt-setting and that we needed to, we wanted to continue to fund that position. Um, so as we look at other grants, as other grants may come available, we, uh, will certainly, um, go after them hard if we can make an argument to continue to fund that, so. Uh, some of it may go back into IDEA, which is, uh, you know, our special leg grant, so, if, if through student services, because there are some positions that are student services, uh, funded. Um, Stacy may see the value of it, and one of the things goes through IDEA, so.
So, those, the team are all going to be part of the budget process, not predetermined? Yeah. So, with this, I want to acknowledge that board members have asked you for this kind of detail, you're providing it. Then I think we have a responsibility to kind of be coordinated in how we ask our, uh, ask our questions, uh, as, as, as part of the process. I wonder what, um, you want to come back, I, I personally think right now that a summary of where we are with ARP two, with the deadline coming up is the most urgent for this board, because we still have some flexibility around ARP three, not a lot. Now you're saying that.
Oh, I, I, I'm, I'm, yes. Um, um, in the back of my head is always the thought of, we have a large portion of that nine million dollars right now earmarked for this bill.
I know it.
And it is always in my head, um, if we have to pivot, um, which I, I don't, I don't go to Reno a lot, um, and, and so, uh, I'm, I'm not betting that we're going to have to move it away, um, but, um, yes, I, I, we are preparing it, if we have to pivot, we have to pivot, but yes, ESER two is our main focus right now.
So, two things, at least, we'll see if everybody else agrees, I think we, we want to make sure we spend that money, we don't lose it. That's between now and September thirtieth, so give the board that summary of where we are, and it has to be done quickly, because we're already in.
Yeah, we're, so, so.
You're close to it, the point you already provided. But secondly, to give us the percentage for this infrastructure, clearly, with an itemized width, so we can see that out of ARP.
I stand corrected. I, my math was shoddy.
Okay.
It is seventy-one percent.
Okay.
Which is.
I'm glad we at least concur on that, because I'm an English major, so.
Which, uh, which is, I think, well within the reasonable parameters.
Thank you. Well done, sir.
But I think clarification would be helpful for all board members.
For everybody to see it, because I do also think there are those big. For everybody to see it. Because I do also think there are those big issues around the pivot that you talked about with respect to all the money being focused on the high school. What happens if that's not the most prudent thing to do, uh, in the end? We'll have to, anyway, give everybody that information. But with ARP Esser, we still have a little more time. With ARP two, I mean, Esser two, we do not, you know, we lose, and I know you're on top of it, but I think it would give everybody just that sense of comfort to know how close we are to spending it all.
Uh, I, I can, um, I will work with, with Shirley and get an actual to-date number. Uh, because as I said, this is a, um, this is a little old. Um, we're, we're looking to, um, some of the lines that were still, that we saw that were still large. Uh, we're looking to, um, purchase materials and things that we can use for our students right now. Um, and, and some of it had to do with, we're coming right out of summer. And, you know, our teachers don't work during the summer, and as much as we tried to get them to, um, purchase things over summer, not everyone was purchasing. And so, um, I think if the business officer was sitting here right now, they'd be shooting daggers at me because we are actively pushing to, uh, get money spent so that what you're seeing there of a, of a, a three fifty-five is much of all of our rate cap of what's being left behind, so. But I will get that and I will send that out as information to the board this next weekend.
So I'm looking at the agenda. I'm also looking at the clock. And, um, I think that the superintendent's goals and evaluation process, that's ongoing. I would invite, uh, any members of the, the board to offer suggestions, to offer, uh, examples of, of approaches that you think would be useful. We know we want a comprehensive approach. We want many different people involved in that. We need to have a process in place, uh, by October one, ideally, uh, for the last quarter of the, this, this first half of the year.
Ten days away.
Yeah, it's only ten days, yeah. I, I have been assembling materials. We've been working on it for a while. Um, I, it is currently in the contract and it's, uh, the executive committee's responsibility. I've heard Jinx's questions about that. I'm opening it more broadly. In fact, I think I would like to ask if there are volunteers who would like to join the superintendent's evaluation committee to supplement the executive committee. Very good. Anybody else want to join the, uh, evaluation committee to help us figure out a process is what I would add. The executive committee is already involved. All right, Karen?
I agree with you.
Did you raise your hand? Okay.
One thing I suggested, can I say that, is that every board member has a chance to provide feedback to the, to the, um, exec board, the evaluation process.
Absolutely.
And then, uh, family members, community members, uh, staff, everybody, you want to do all of that. So if, I think, if you're thinking about that and ways that you can provide that information to the executive committee, that is part of the process and part of what we need.
Right. All kinds of things. So I'm, I'm looking at the rest of the agenda and we've got, um, the possibility of a recommendation for rejoining the Vermont School Boards Association as not time-intensive. Um, a suggestion or request from David Clark that we talked about, a bus-related request from Compass School. We have no appointments or reservations tonight, I think. So I would like us, because some of these things could be deferred, I wonder, um, David, if you, you know, actually, Andy, if you would help us, but I think I bumped the bus-related request from Compass for that to be something that we talk about now. And then to the extent, then let's begin the process of talking about the Vermont School Boards Association. Then we'll be, or places, suggestions for upcoming meetings and director's comments, and we'll be getting the calls. So, Compass School.
Yes, so, do we want, do you want me to just mention the VSA and then we can push that off for future stuff, or you want to just table that right now?
Uh, can I ask before you do that, make a comment? The policy manual is, is blocked from us when we were trying to look. That's why a couple of them haven't posted is because they've blocked it.
And that's content around whether or not to be a part of Vermont School Boards.
Putting it off though, right now, it is going to.
Jeopardizing our policy stuff, okay.
It's why I'm, I'm attempting at saying that.
Thank you.
All right, all right. I, uh.
Sure, go ahead.
So, uh, if you want to limit discussion on it and everything like that, then, then we can decide to table it. Um, so as Priscilla just mentioned, uh, one of the things we've learned was that in the past, the VSA um, had all of their material, the majority of their material was open to the public. And, um, at the beginning of this school year, they blocked access to, uh, much of their material uh, unless you are a member. This district or supervisory union, uh, I apologize, is the only supervisory union in the state who is not a member of the Vermont School Boards Association. Um, however, we have access specifically, uh, or majoritively around, um, the, uh, policy updates, and the policies have been updated and reviewed. Uh, the Vermont School Boards Association does post those, um, and we do have, we had in the past had access to that, uh, which has allowed us to maintain um, our policies and, and update them as needed. Um, recently also, I was, uh, informed that the VFA was holding, um, panels, regional panels around PCBs and, um, state legislators were there offering information. The state was there, EDC was there, Department of Health was there. And, uh, I was asked why we weren't there. And, um, because we were so fresh in the PCBs and had more knowledge than what would be presented at some of these, because like I said, some of it's over a year-old information. Um, I inquired and asked, I was politely told, you're not a member, you're not, you're not allowed to attend. I asked if there's any way we could get, I could get at the table, because I felt that the information to be able to inform the high school board and potentially other boards around PCBs was, um, in our best interest. I spoke with the executive director who offered, uh, that if, uh, I was willing to be a, um, volunteer panelist, I could come and present at, at the, um, at these, uh, regional meetings. Um, but I wouldn't be able to attend any other part, which frankly, I don't need another meeting, so I was okay with that. And so I was willing to, um, participate, uh, in that. Um, uh, the executive director did ask me, um, you know, if I would, uh, consider, I said, not my decision, it would be a decision I would bring to the board, um, to, uh, consider that, uh, piece. Uh, we had some discussions around Act forty-six. Um, uh, they assured me that Act forty-six was in their rearview mirror um, and that they are looking to, uh, uh, you know, just support school boards. Um, I asked about the, the fact, if it's just a supervisory union, uh, how does that help support local boards? Um, every local board member, uh, would have equal access, uh, so it's just supervisory union that has to, uh, join, um, that type of stuff, so. My, my only, I, I really, I don't have a dog in this fight. I, I do know some of the history. Uh, um, and so my, my only, I guess, dog maybe that I do have in this fight is just wanting to make sure we have access to whatever relevant information is going to benefit our supervisor.
Yeah, I see several hands, all right. I'm going to start with Chris and Karen, then David.
Andy, what's the, uh, cost for membership?
I'd say seventy-five.
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred. Sorry, I was going to say seventy-five hundred, but I was like.
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred.
You were the issue, giving access to all of us.
Yeah. Well, I think it is falling to be a member of this organization. Um, and it's, it is a wonder to me that they didn't block this a long time ago. From, it was nice of them to keep it open, uh, as long as they did, um. You know, we don't, we're cutting ourselves off from resources. We don't have a say. We, we can't go to their meetings and express our opinion. They, they may not, you know, it's like any organization, organizations go whatever direction they will, and you may not agree with them. But at least you'd have a say. Um, and you know, it, to, to, like, chew some old bone, and there are some old bones about to be chewed here, uh, about their people's complaints with the VSA, it is, it's just kind of ridiculous. Let's be a part of the rest of the state. Let's join the VSA, let's make those benefits available to us and, um, you know, kind of put the past behind us.
I'd suggest you put that reform with a motion.
I would, I would move that, um, when the Northeast Supervisory Union Board uh, vote to uh, join the Vermont, uh, School Boards Association uh, for the current school year.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. All right, Karen, you're next.
Oh, oh, thank you, Hardy.
I was going to ask the same question that Chris did, so I have my question.
Oh, all right. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Um, I, I guess the understanding that I'm grasping here around the table is the fact that those of us around the table with one or two exceptions are not aware that we have access to most, the panoply of services that the VSA provides through our seat on River Valley Tech Center, uh, which is in fact a member of the Vermont School Boards Association. And our, um, uh, River Valley Tech Center representative is in, um, a splendid position to gain access to virtually all of the useful services that the, um, or my trouble saying this still, the VSA provides. Um, possibly with the exception if you want to do something like a superintendent search. Should not be misconstrued as saying I do not currently support the superintendent's work here, although I am critical of it. Um, so I think that we should carefully define just exactly what it is that we need that we don't already have access to. And Shirley.
All right, Jason, yes?
Um, Cheryl, I, I would like to get more background as to why we're not in it and what happened before I, before I vote, because seventy-five hundred dollars is a lot of money. And I've never heard of the VSA until today. And so I've been here almost four years. And, uh, I haven't felt the need to use them. So why would I want to spend that money now when I don't need it, when we have other issues to fix?
All right, go ahead, Chris, and then I'll actually make.
Valid point. We, uh, each of the member districts of WNSU used to be individually members of the Vermont School Boards Association. When, um, when Act forty-six came, they changed their membership structure so that it was now at the SU level or the school SD level, whatever the, the main unit was of a particular district. And not at the individual board level. So each board used to be assessed a few thousand, and it sort of scooped it into one pot. So Vermont School Boards Association provides us our insurance. Uh, it's a wonder to me, I'm amazed that they continue to allow this, but they do. Uh, and I remember during Edie's time, she went out looking for cheaper insurance and couldn't find it, so it was, it's a good deal. So the Visbit Vermont School Boards Insurance Trust, that's them. There are these resources. They do have a, uh, you know, a, a board themselves, it's formed by elected members from the regions of the state. They're a lobbying organization as well. You know, they do talk to the legislature and advocate for school board positions. Uh, you know, generally, they're, they're really good advocates, that's my opinion, for public schools. Uh, as an organization. They provide, they have legal staff, so when we look at their policies, we're actually using their lawyer's work. Because they're put together by a lawyer. Uh, if, if we have to do this ourself, we're going to end up paying our lawyer to write our policies. So I think that really quickly will exceed the seven thousand five hundred dollars. The, the history was, and David will certainly correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that, you know, during Act forty-six, during the consolidation process, some of our towns voted for consolidation and some were adamantly opposed to it. And, uh, so the School Boards Association, in my view, and I was superintendent at the time, so I do have some, they're connected to the Superintendent's Association. It's kind of taking the position of, look, you got to look at consolidation, you know, this is the way it's going. And they weren't really, I, I was, I kept saying at meetings, you know, this isn't going to work in my district, you know? What else you got for me? And it kind of took them a long time to come around to, oh, yeah. There are a number of districts, it, it didn't work where they never consolidated, somewhere in the Northeast Kingdom. Um, but in the end, uh, uh, they did provide a, a, a great consultant, but our plan, Wayne Pearson, if you remember, anybody remembers him, he was the superintendent from Hanover. Great guy, did a great job, but I'm sure you remember, David. Did, did a nice job, put our plan together as best he could, considering that we weren't in, in agreement, you know? Rockingham was not in agreement with. Yeah. With Craft and Weston, right. Uh, so we had to cobble something together. Anyway, they provided that resource. They provide superintendent source searches, they provide stuff like, uh, formats for evaluating your superintendent, all that kind of stuff. So, um, I left, but I, the board members at that time, uh, David was the chair of VSU, I believe, at that time. And I'm sure that's why we did not become members of it, because David has an old, very old bone to pick with the School Boards Association, which he's not afraid to talk about. But it goes back to a superintendent that was here twenty-five, thirty years ago. So.
So I think that's enough for this part of.
Yeah, so that's why we're, we're not, and
Yeah.
we, we just never moved from the individual boards back to, uh, you know, consolidating that at the SU.
I'd, I'd like to make.
Sorry, may I ask you a question?
A clarifying question, all right, then I'm going to take it.
When, when you said, um, insurance, is that, I, I'm thinking workers' comp, or is that like for staff or, what, what do you mean?
Uh, our property insurance.
Okay, so not.
And, uh, liability.
All right, thank you.
And, and I think.
Workers' comp.
I think workman's comp.
I do too.
Okay.
It's a self-insured pool.
When you said insurance, I was thinking everything for everybody.
Yeah, not health insurance.
Thank you.
Everything but the.
I'm going to go to Hardy.
Can I, uh, call the question?
Uh, by Robert's rules, we can add additional comments, but I hear you, and if people want to vote on it, I'd ask permission to make one statement about why I'm considering it. I feel like, if I can. As I listen to all of the new board members and even experienced. As I listen to all of the new board members and even experienced board members, we've got a lot of questions. And there are a lot of things, there are a lot of things that we want to learn, a lot of things that we want to know about, and one of the features of membership. Is that there are regular workshops that we can be a part of that are free. There are regular meetings of board chairs that are free to us. There is training that's provided. There is the access to the policies on a current basis. So for me, I don't think we can get it all through one person. That isn't possible for all of our individual board members to participate in any number of workshops or go to the website to get additional information. So even though I voted at the time to withdraw. I am one of those who voted to get out of the Vermont School Board Association. It's been years. And I think we're missing a lot of access to good information that could help all of us, and I don't want to have to have. One person being a conduit. I don't think that, that just doesn't make sense to me. So that's my comment about it. I know Hardy called for the question. Are there any other strong comments?
Yeah, it, it is small board, so technically according to Robert's rules, calling for the question should not happen because then you're.
Question.
You're not allowing the minority to speak. But that, that said. Um, yeah, one thing that we did, just so members are aware too, is one thing we did was the training, not this year, but last year, we did the training, I believe, for them. And it was, we had to pay a different price for it as, as non-members versus members. And I'm not sure whether it might have been totally free. I don't know that. I can't speak to that.
All right, David, go ahead.
Insurance Trust. Is independent Vermont School Boards Association. They would not be able to kick us out.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, let's take a vote. There's a motion on the, on the floor. So, and the motion is to participate, to join the Vermont School Board Association and pay the fee for this. Year. I'm going to go to you, Jean, if you'd like to vote.
Yes, sorry, I'm joined.
Okay, thank you. Hardy.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Around the table, Karen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Yes. Okay, and you're not voting tonight? Thank you. Jake?
Yes.
Yes.
Jason?
No.
Okay. What else? Okay. All right, so one no, and the rest is a yes, I'm a yes for this, okay? So thank you. Let's go then to the bus-related requests that came to me, I think, from David and from Kelly. Kendra, I'm sorry, Rickery, who is the.
Well, it actually came to us from Kendra, but yes.
Go ahead, give us a little background, please.
Well, I actually hope that Kendra would be here tonight. Speak to the request, but you should correctly share. I believe. That Kendra, who is the director of Compass, Kendra Rickery, I get Kendra Rickery and Kendra Sowers, who's a board member in Burlington. Used. But Kendra pointed out that Compass currently has two Westminster kids. For whom they would like to be able to provide transportation. And inasmuch as the bus routes go directly past both those kids, potential pickup points. As well, it's helped the school that they would like to know if there would be a possibility that we could. Consider doing that bus. And if. It was felt by this board that I did not want to provide a freebie. Certainly the prerogative of this board could establish some sort of fee. I will point out that there is much precedence. For doing so, because we have summer after summer after summer, not quite as long as I can remember, but for many of those years. Provided busing for meeting waters Y M C A. And in that case, the busing has been exclusively the benefit of meeting waters Y M C A. And in this case, it would simply be two additional, possibly not even additional stops. But definitely one additional drop off on the routes which you already established. And that's, that's, that's as much as I can tell you, as I am not otherwise, I can't even tell you what, what grade these kids are in. And bluntly, the only reason that I could see that we would not want to do it. Is, and that would really actually have to be the Rockingham contingent, because if those kids are in seventh or eighth grade. That is wishing money that would not endure the benefit of Rockingham Middle School. Although I would consider that to be a very petty reason not to consider it. So that's why I can tell you. I wasn't prepared to speak to this tonight, so I ablied it and hopefully. Some of it extends. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. You did ask for it to get put on the.
I did ask for it.
All right, I'm going to have Andy provide information now. Thank you.
So in context, this came up very early in my tenure with your Supervisory Union when I was the Director of Students' Service. Where many students that attended Compass would just jump onto our buses. And. And as it became an issue, I was involved with it and speaking with Chris Pratt, the former superintendent. And when we reviewed it under school choice. So we're talking seventh and eighth grade students who have school choice. That. If you were to provide transportation to students in seventh and eighth grade. Who have school choice, in that school choice. When a, when a family chooses what school they want to go to, they also take on the ownership of transportation. For those students.
And paying the difference. Intuition.
And they paid a difference in tuition, yes. The concern that we looked into and addressed was that. If you open it up to just provide transportation to Compass students. What is to stop a family who maybe sends a child over to somewhere in Keene, New Hampshire? They use, don't provide transportation for them as well, or to Putney Grammar School or any other self-sustained school. And so. Back in twenty twenty. Mr. Pratt had put into practice that we would not transport any students. Who were not. Students of W N E S U, so who did not attend our public schools. And so we have continued that enforcement at that time. So. In, in, in the, in the sense, I mean, if, if transportation were needed for a student to attend an independent school. Like through an I E P or something like that, then that's a, that's a service. That is in an I E P that we would provide.
All right.
I would like to respond to that, because it's somewhat disingenuous, I believe, to suggest. That if we delivered kids to Compass School, we would then have an obligation to deliver kids to school in Keene. As for that. And I will say. That I think that that sort of hypothetical situation could be very effectively addressed through. Policy. This district could consider drafting a policy as to what circumstances it would. Provide transportation to. Kids who are attending a school, which is not one of the four schools in our district. But would, as in the situation with Compass, be on our bus routes. So I. I think that, I think that policies should take a look at this. And just put this notion that if we took two kids to Compass, it would obligate us to take kids to Keene. Right out of my, that's just ridiculous.
So I see the hands up, and I will come on you. I'm, I'm going to say that in terms of board decorum and statements. That this chair has an objection to you're using that kind of language that is inflammatory and disparaging. The notion of calling the superintendent's comments disingenuous. And the whole suggestion ridiculous is inflammatory. And so I would like that on the record. I think it's inappropriate.
I hope you will also add that I duly take note of your objections to my comments.
Thank you.
But that doesn't mean I agree.
Karen.
The issue for me is precedent. I, I've been in situations where we've had to make those decisions. And whether or not it's Keene, it doesn't matter to me. It has to do with precedent. So if we pick up these kids from not, you know, public school, then maybe. You know, the school in Westminster and Putney, for example. People are going to, you know what I mean? So I, I, I am a strong supporter of. Precedent setting, and I would. Not recommend that we do that.
Okay, and, and I see other hands. You haven't spoken tonight, Lynn, and then I'll come to you, Jim.
Again, I think precedence is an issue of being from Athens, Rafton. If we were to say it's okay to bus them to Compass School, Mathen's Rafton, that's a bit of a haul. Because our buses from there got to directly pass.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, I, I never knew Chris Pratt. I don't think I. Anything I've heard about him. I, I, I've never agreed with him. Except on this one. I think that, I think that's absolutely the right policy. I think the. And Karen, I, I agree wholeheartedly with you, but I think the. You just, you, you can't make exceptions. And. We would be putting our. I mean, our transportation is already an issue for us. And I think it would be then potentially Pandora's box. And so I think we ought to leave well enough alone.
I agree.
Cheryl, I have her hand up, and then I did have a question.
Thank you so much for helping me out there. Jean, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it sets a bad precedent to give one school that isn't in our district preferential treatment and say that kids should be picked up. It would also cause problems like. If all of a sudden the bus routes change, then that kid wasn't on the bus route anymore, or if. They stay late after school and we have an after-school bus running, does that mean we also have to bus that kid? I think we provide buses for the students who go to our public schools. And we leave it at that. I don't think we should give one school the option of using our buses.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl, do we have any buses that we could sell them? Do we have all the buses that we can sell? Too late. At, at this, at this point, we don't have a bus available to sell them, but if we were to acquire another bus, we would probably have availability, yes.
As a part of this discussion, I want to add that I, I think Compass is an outstanding school. I would look for ways, I think many of us are looking for ways to collaborate and cooperate. I personally think this is a precedent issue as well. But I am very open to ways in which we can put that outstanding school. Yes.
Can we vote?
Yes, we may. Except we need a motion. I don't think so, yeah.
So I move to deny the request for transportation for the Compass School students.
Okay. Hardy, I'm sure you're going to second that. Not that we need a second, I know we're going to need a second, but I was just looking, looking at it. That's, that's all right. Motion is on the floor. That's, that's all good. And let's start with Karen tonight.
Yes.
Deny. The motion is denied.
Yes, to deny.
Yeah, yes to deny, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, to the motion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hardy.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Okay, I'm a yes as well, so unanimous deny on the first. Kendra, all right, any, now, on the next agenda item, it's agenda suggestions for upcoming meetings. I'll remind everybody to even send suggestions to Andy or to me, and that we'll. Consider them for the agenda and really appreciate that. Having said that, though, if there are additional suggestions you want to make tonight, I'd like to do that too. Our next scheduled meeting is October twenty, at six p.m. And now let's go to the Director's Conference. All right, Jean, do you have any tonight?
No comment.
Thank you. Hardy. Thank you very much. All right. Jake?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Cheryl. I apologize to Jean. I, I said hi and I didn't mean that, so.
Good for them stills. It's pretty lengthy meeting. We need our comments to be short, so just. Thank you. I think we got a lot done tonight. We worked well together. All of that, yes. Wonderful situation. Thank you. All right, Karen.
I thought we had covered a lot.
Just a reminder that the next meeting of the finance, S U Finance Committee is next Wednesday at three o'clock. Look, what's the location, Andy?
We're, we're going to have that at the S U office.
You promise?
I promise.
I'm having trouble, just for the record, with meeting times and locations.
I will send you a personal.
It's, it's the eleventh, Wednesday.
No, next, it's October eleventh.
Sorry, yeah. October eleventh.
I was already writing down next Wednesday. I wanted to make sure I got it on, next Wednesday, October eleventh.
My only comment is I do enjoy all the discussion, and I, I, I learn a lot from even if some of the discussion is. Not as positive, but I appreciate it. Let's, I take it all in, and. I thank you for those that have spoken up.
Director's Court. Okay, I realize that the membership is uncertain as to whether those joint meetings that the Union High School Board and the Stitching Board has heard. They've heard on the nights of the Union High School's annual meeting. Generally before, but in some cases they've recessed, allowed the meeting to take place. Thank you for that question.
In my comments, Priscilla is asking simply to announce the next policy committee meeting is on Tuesday, is coming Tuesday at five thirty. I, I want to thank everybody for your patience tonight. This was lengthier than I would usually recommend for us, but I appreciate it. We're only going to do the violence, I think, unless they will stand, they won't have to, we even asked them, I had the question today, does it have to be reloaded on every year? And attorney said no. So we're just trying to get this in place. It's been missing for a while, so thank you, everybody, for your patience on that. And I want to acknowledge Mike Stack, actually, who has resigned from the. High School Board and therefore from the S U Board. I want to thank him for his service. And say that I look forward to his continuing to be a support. And as I get a little emotional, it's just because, you know, we do have differences of opinion among us, and. I think he epitomized. Most of the time, actually, I think he did epitomize courtesy and respectful ways of differing with people, and I'd like us all to remember that. We all have strong, we're all thoughtful people, we're all doing our best. I personally am going to ask us to be as civil as possible, respectful of one another, knowing that we have differences of opinion, but that doesn't. Mean that we're not earnest in doing the best we can. So anyway, thank you to Mike for his service, and I hope he stays involved. Thanks, everybody. Meeting continues. Love you.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV. Keeping government honest.